Before we get started, I'll just make some general remarks. Of course, we all know you very well, but wanted to remind all of us that you were first elected to the House of Representatives in 2006. And his assignments have been Committee on Energy and Commerce, serving on the subcommittees of Commerce, Manufacturing and Trade, and the Subcommittee on Energy and Power. Congressman Sarbanes has worked on a wide variety of issues in Congress, including health care reform, student loan reform, and the ongoing effort to protect the Chesapeake Bay. For many years, the Third Congressional District included Anarundel County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and Howard County, but now it includes parts of Montgomery County, parts that I used to represent. So I'm very happy that you are there, leading the charge. And of course, I know that my colleagues will have different questions and issues that they care about. Obviously, on our minds, we continue to have transportation funding at federal level, and the needs that we have here, that's a major priority for us. Also, we would like to know about the impact on sequestration budget negotiations. Very interested, of course, in immigration reform, as we have heard some very positive announcements today, particularly President Obama giving a speech in Las Vegas regarding this. And of course, health care reform, and also the expected impact on local governments, which I know it's been an issue that you are very well-versed and have led the way. So welcome, and I'll just open it for you, and this is very casual, and we're a pretty friendly bunch. So we do have two council members that couldn't join us. Valerie Irvin. Okay, Valerie Irvin and Councilmember Reamer not able to join us, but Nancy Pelosi.
Great. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with the council, and want to congratulate you on your recent assumption of the presidency and Craig on the vice presidency here of the council. I'm very excited to be now representing a part of Montgomery County. And I worked hard during the campaign season to make sure I was getting around and getting to meet people in that new part of the district. And now, as of January 3rd, when I was sworn in, I'm officially representing an area that includes Brookville, Alney, Burtonsville, Sandy Spring, and then sort of comes down that 29 New Hampshire corridor as far as the White Oak area. Actually, I brought some materials, because I'm the new kid on the block, so I wanted to give you some information. But there's actually included in here a map, which shows in blue the part of Montgomery County that is included within the Third District. So that gives you a sense of it. The good news is that, as a commuter, I'm one of the few members of Congress who has the ability to actually get back home every night, and Phil and I were just talking about that. It's a blessing, I find, because you get out of the bubble, you get back and talk to real people and real constituents, and you get that kind of daily gut check on what's happening in your district. But about 80% of my district, as weirdly shaped as it is, and I know some people here are aware of that, about 80% of the district can be accessed within about 15 or 20 minutes of that commute that I take every single day. And certainly, the Montgomery County portion of the district falls into that category. So I expect to be very present in the new part of the Third District, which is in Montgomery County. And already, getting to know some of these communities has been a wonderful opportunity, and I look forward to building on that. I've included, as well, some information on the left side here of the kind of outreach we're hoping to do. So there's a list of my current offices, which includes House in Annapolis, Washington, of course, but we're adding an office in Burtonsville. We're having an opening soon. We have the address, but it's not quite open yet, so we'll certainly let people know when that happens. And that'll be, I think, a good resource for people in the county. In addition to that, we're going to have regular monthly outreach hours beginning in March of this year at the White Oak Senior Center, Longwood Community Rec. Center, East County Community Rec. Center, and at Maryland Praesner Community Rec. Center. And those locations offer pretty good coverage of the part of Montgomery County that I represent. So that's kind of a word on the constituent service side of things. And I put a high, high premium on constituent service and the timeliness of our response to concerns that people bring to us regarding any matter that has a federal component to it. So if a constituent needs help with Social Security, or Medicare, or there's a visa issue, or something like that that involves a veteran's issue that involves a federal agency, that's our job. And I will expect that there will be opportunities for us to refer from our office inquiries that come in that are better handled by the county council and vice versa. And the major overlap in my district is with Valerie Irvin's district, but there's also a portion that overlaps with your district, Nancy. So I expect that we'll develop that relationship, that we can really work together to help the constituents that we jointly represent. I thought I would just step back and offer two perspectives in terms of Washington and that part of the job. One is kind of the general state of affairs there now, and as you know, we haven't finished navigating the fiscal issues that confront us. We did substantially address some of them in that fiscal cliff deal that was reached right at the end of the year, but there were still some things that were punted. And there's various deadlines that loom. The House voted the other day to push off by three months the debt ceiling situation, but it'll be back. At the same time, we're going to have to get a budget through, or risk the potential of a government shutdown. And then we've got these sequestration cuts, which, again, the fiscal cliff deal delayed that for two months, but that's sort of back on the horizon soon. And you well know the implications of that for places like Montgomery County. There's a, you know, the way it stands now, you'd be instituting an 8% across-the-board cut. The problem with that approach, with the sequestration approach, is it's done in kind of a sort of wholesale arbitrary way. It's not a thoughtful process of making cuts and finding savings, which everyone recognizes has to be done. The President, of course, is pushing, and I and other Democrats in Congress certainly support his view that dealing with the sequestration issue ought to be done, continue to be done in a balanced way, so that we're not looking to cuts exclusively to solve the problem, but there's also revenue proposals on the table. And that's going to be a contentious discussion as we move forward. But particularly jurisdictions that are heavily dependent upon the federal government, either directly or indirectly in Montgomery County would be in that category, are anxious, rightly anxious about this sequestration issue. It has even potential implications for, you know, the bond ratings. You have a terrific bond rating in Montgomery County, but, you know, as sequestration and these other fiscal impacts loom, you know, counties like Montgomery County may get looked at through a different lens. So that's kind of what's happening on the fiscal side. In terms of other substantive matters that will get attention, gun control is clearly on the agenda. It will not be easy to get these measures in place. Hard to believe that the resistance to things that I view, and I would expect many of you here view as common sense proposals, is out there, but there is significant resistance. I think we'll have substantial progress on sort of universal background checks as a threshold matter. But as you know, one of the problems is that there are, particularly in the Senate, there are a lot of rural states where there's a heavy influence from the other perspective on this, and that may affect our ability to get some of the things that the President and the Vice President's put forward through the Congress. I certainly am a very strong supporter of gun control, always have been, and I think all of the measures that the Vice President unveiled recently at the press conference are ones that deserve serious, serious consideration, and I'd like to see passed ultimately. I want to note that the resistance to it, the organized resistance to it, doesn't just come from organizations like the NRA, which gets a lot of attention, but there's a lot of moneyed interests behind it. The gun manufacturers have a pretty strong lobby as well in Washington. I'll come back to that theme of money and politics, because it's something I'm particularly focused on. But there's some information that suggests that some of these manufacturers build their sales models on an assumption that at least 20% of the weapons will get sold illegally. So the industry's even building on the assumption that that is happening out there, and there's many reasons why this is the time to respond. Comprehensive immigration reform, of course, was put front and center yesterday by this group of eight senators, four Republicans and four Democrats, who put forward a set of principles. The President is speaking today. I think that his proposal, from what I understand, will be a little bit more generous in terms of the path that one needs to take to citizenship than what was suggested yesterday, and that ultimately, there'll be some kind of compromise in the middle there. But clearly, the conversation is happening in a meaningful way. And Senator Menendez, I think, put it very well in describing why it's happening the way it is now. He said that Americans support this, according to all surveys. The Hispanic community in particular expects it. The Democratic Party wants it, and the Republican Party needs it. And so you have all of the ingredients that suggest we might actually be able to get comprehensive immigration reform done in a serious way in this term. In terms of my own interests, I won't go through everything, but I did put a card in the right-hand side here, which is sort of an overview of what my committee assignments have been since I came to Congress in the 110th Congress. My primary committee assignment now is Energy and Commerce, which is a terrific committee. Henry Waxman is the ranking member there. And Congressman Upton is the current Republican Chair of the committee. It has broad jurisdiction over energy issues, which I'm very focused on, renewable energy issues in particular, also the question of how and to what extent we should be regulating hydraulic fracturing, which is becoming a more present issue for this region. And I have my concerns about how fast we're moving in that direction. We need to make sure that that's done safely. But also, this has jurisdiction over health, and so much of the Affordable Care Act, I was on the committee when we passed the Affordable Care Act out of the committee. And my background is in healthcare. That's what I did for 18 years before I came to Congress, so I'm very interested in that issue and how the implementation of the Affordable Care Act will go as we move forward. I won't list all of these things, but some of the key efforts that I've been involved with, VetCor, TELORC enhancement among federal agencies, which has certainly relevance for Montgomery County, on education issues, public service loan forgiveness, young people who go into public service jobs, government jobs, nonprofit jobs, being able to get forgiveness of the significant student debt that many of them have in terms of federal loans, and other items on the front and back of this. The one I will mention in particular is this Grassroots Democracy Act, which is a piece of legislation I introduced in September and reintroduced about two weeks ago, which is to try to promote grassroots-funded, citizen-owned campaigns, you know, some sort of alternative to the current way most members of Congress have to raise money, which is that they have to go to large moneyed special interests out there. And the effect of that on Congress is that there's an increasing dependency on that funding for campaign dollars. And no surprise, when it comes time to make public policy, the institution tends to then lean in the direction of those interests and oftentimes away from the public interest. There is no alternative right now. If members of Congress want to try to do things a different way, the Grassroots Democracy Act would propose an alternative. And the other thing I've left for you is the Sarbanes standard. This is just an example of how we communicate with our constituents on a regular basis. This was an issue that we put out after the fiscal cliff was passed, and then behind that, I have a little summary of the Grassroots Democracy Act for those of you who are interested in it. So that's kind of the view from where I am. But I must say, I've already talked longer than I wanted to, because I want to hear from the council the issues that you're concerned about. And, you know, I'm very much in a learning mode right now, newly arrived in the county, wanting to understand what your perspective is. So let me throw it back to you, and thanks again for the invitation. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilmember Reamer.
Welcome.
Thanks.
The last couple of years, we've been really fortunate to have so many meetings with our congressional delegation. I'm not sure which presiding officer, you know, led the way on that, but I've been here for a while, and we didn't do it quite as often. It's really a tremendous opportunity, and I really enjoyed getting to know you over the last couple of years. You've been very present in Montgomery County. So I'm going to touch on just a couple of things quickly. First of all, you know, you asked what's of most concern here, and I can't think of anything at the federal level that's of greater concern to our constituents than Womata. And, you know, long tradition of Sarbanes is, you know, championing Womata, and we're just, you know, it's just hurting. I mean, it's crumbling before our eyes, and obviously, the agency has put forward this very ambitious plan without any real clue of how it's going to be funded. Most of our gripe's about failure to step up to the transportation challenge focuses on Annapolis, because we're counting on the state to do so much for us, but, you know, clearly, for the Maryland delegation, it's got to be transit priority number one. We want to expand, we want to build a purple line, we want to do other things, but Womata's facing such hard times. So that's my first point. The second point, and then I'll yield. Increasingly, as our constituents hear about the worry about the sequester, I get asked, why would the defense budget be treated in the same manner as it was when we had two hot wars going on? Is it not obvious on its face that the end of one war and the near-term drawing down of a second ought to change our defense spending priorities? So it's a question I'm relaying from my constituents, but I hear it more and more. It seems evident on its face. Obviously, defense industry's very important to Maryland, but seriously, we were fighting two wars, and soon we won't be anymore. Doesn't that change our thinking about defense spending?
Well, those are both good questions. Let me start with the last one, because it's a reasonable observation that as we're drawing down these overseas commitments, that ought to free up more resources and allow us to kind of consolidate the defense budget in some ways. Keep in mind, though, that the expectation of bringing those, of drawing those down in many of the budget models and assumptions has already kind of been worked in to the discussions. So if you talk to, you know, the Department of Defense, if you talk to the administration, and if you talk to members of Congress who are focused on the budget, like Chris Van Hollen, obviously, and Paul Ryan in the majority in the House, they would say that they're already building 10-year models that have that included in it. Now, having said that, we did kind of break through a psychological wall with the defense establishment as a result of the debt ceiling debate and sequestration, which is, I think for the first time, you had the Department of Defense and other defense-related agencies, and then all of the spin-off industries that are associated with them, thinking seriously about how do we sort of constrain our spending here? Because the writing was on the wall in a way that it had never been before. So you're getting discussions about, you know, which weapon programs really should be continued, which are obsolete. I think you're getting people to look more seriously at the question of have some of these expenditures continued just based on sort of political influence, more than sound judgment about the merits of a particular weapon system. So it kind of, it had a disruptive effect that if we can now get to a more serious conversation about how you apply these cuts, could end, we could look back and say, well, that was constructive to some degree. My own view is that this notion that we have to have $1 on the domestic side for $1 on the defense side, that's sort of being chained to that perspective, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We ought to evaluate domestic programs for the positive impact that they can have and the investment that they represent for the society here at home. And if it makes sense to minimize some of the cuts there versus some of the things we do on the defense side, then that's the approach that we ought to take. In terms of investing in our domestic priorities, there's no priority that's higher than infrastructure. And of course, the President, I give him credit, at a critical time when the economy was really in tough shape, and when his, when peer nations around the world were going into a policy of extreme austerity, which they paid for dearly, you look at Great Britain, you look at the unemployment rate in the Eurozone, which is 11% and climbing, our President made the decision to invest. Because of pushback, I don't think the investment was as great as even he would have liked to see, but it was enough to keep the economy going. And so our unemployment rate, while it's unacceptably high for everybody still, at 7.8%, is so much lower than what we're seeing in other parts of the world where they went into this kind of impulse of austerity. Part of that investment was infrastructure, but going forward, there has to be more investment in infrastructure. And it makes perfect sense, because it needs to be done when you look at the crumbling state of infrastructure, whether you're talking about transit projects, or you're talking about schools, et cetera. But the other is, it creates a lot of jobs. I mean, it's not like, you know, we have a situation where we need to create jobs, we have a pristine infrastructure, or we have a crumbling infrastructure, but we have full unemployment. I mean, these things go together. We have a crumbling infrastructure, we ought to invest in it, and we can create jobs from it. And it's right for state and local officials and jurisdictions to have that expectation. Now, I've supported strongly the idea of creating Infrastructure, National Infrastructure Bank, to help leverage these investments and build those partnerships at the state and local level. And I'll keep pushing for that. I think the Democrats are going to do that, and the administration regards that as a real priority.
Hi, I guess, Member of Florida.
Yes, hi.
Hi. Thanks very much for coming over. It's really important to talk, and we've been, as George said, we've had great conversations with our congressional representatives over the years, and great to have you as part of the panel.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear you talk about infrastructure, because one of the frustrating things from our perspective, I think we would all collectively agree, is the unreliability and unpredictability of federal infrastructure investment, particularly transportation funding. And we've seen the Surface Transportation Act, you know, been filled with a bit over the years, but really, no major improvements have been agreed to, and I suppose it's, you know, it's bearing the brunt, I think, of the Bouncing Act. But I do think, I would hope that you'd pay some special attention to that. And the other thing I would say, which is something I've certainly said to Chris, you guys have just got to resolve this fiscal situation. It's having huge local impacts, and I know you know that, with respect to leasing, with respect to federal contractors, with respect to the predictability of federal employment and the related businesses that comprise really our base here in Montgomery County and in, you know, the Washington metropolitan region. And we made it through the recession on the skeletons really pretty well, but we are facing this unending now series of indecisions. And I think it's very problematic. And, you know, you know what the word on the street is? Congress can't make a decision on this stuff. And I would urge you to, I hope people are talking about that. This council, in the past few years, has made a series of very difficult decisions that have affected employees, that have affected unions, that have affected school funding, transportation, all the things that we personally hold very dear. But we did it, and we moved on, and we explained it, and people got it. And I do think that what the community is looking for is leadership on these points and action. Because as long as this continues, and I don't know if you can get away from all the political parlaying that's going on, but as long as there is inaction, it's really affecting us, I think, as a community at large. The trust in political leadership, the ability to make decisions, and the ability to make hard ones. I do think that the community understands that you face very difficult decisions. But inaction has as many consequences as action, and I would urge you, I hope you all can work this out, because kicking, continuing to move the goalposts, I don't think is helping anyone. And I think it's very problematic, certainly locally here, in terms of what people, what residents can reasonably expect their future to look on. So many of our people are associated with the federal agencies. So many contracts are out there or not. There's a natural pullback at federal agency level right now, and uncertainty is to, you know, whether they can make the next payment, and we're certainly seeing that anecdote. So I would, you know, I know that you all know this, but I just wanted to reemphasize that, because we, it has the potential to have a major impact on our budget. It's starting to already.
The tragic irony of the fiscal situation is that we're, you know, I made the comparative analysis a moment ago, but relative to a lot of our peers, we're in pretty decent shape if we can just deal with this uncertainty issue that you're talking about. And, you know, you have corporations that have all this cash, which they won't deploy, they're not investing, and you have a consumer, you know, consumers who aren't consuming because they're uncertain. The combined effect of this situation of limbo, the state of limbo we're in, is to be cutting off what could be a really terrific economic recovery, if we could just get some certainty in place. Now, you know, what the public doesn't want to hear about is who's to blame for it. They're just like, you know, get on and figure it out and work together. But I do have to say that we contended, particularly in the House of Representatives, we contended with some elements in the last two years that seemed more interested in making political points than actually governing. In fact, some of them would have said to you very openly that they don't really believe in government. Well, if that's your starting point, it's very hard to have a constructive conversation. The other thing that gets back to this issue of money and politics is, you know, there's one study that shows the average member of Congress now spending 30% to 70% of their time fundraising. So in some ways, you're professional fundraisers first, and legislators second. The consequences, the casualties of that are really dealing with the material, but also building relationships of trust with your colleagues. We're living in a different era in terms of the relationships that exist, and everyone kind of sort of stays in their corner. The press oftentimes, you know, some is responsible, some is not, but the high scrutiny of it kind of keeps people in their corners. And so, you know, you lock people in rooms and ask them to come up with deals, like they did with the debt crisis last year, but if the relationships of trust don't exist there, it's very hard to do that. That's an explanation, not an excuse, because the public doesn't want to hear excuses, but you're very right, we've got to get some certainty on these fiscal questions. And then I think it will really unleash a recovery that will be tremendous for the country.
Thank you. Please, Councilmember Berliner, you were next.
Congressman, we haven't spent a lot of time together. I just want to say, I commend you for your introduction to us as a council, and just about the way you go about your business.
Thank you. It's good to be here. Thank you. It's good to be here.
It's very refreshing. I was among the few that thought three was better than two, representing our county. And I think you are proving that here today, that we have three congressional figures that look after our county is by definition better. I had the privilege, I'll just speak briefly, of serving with your father when I was Legislative Director to Howard Metzenbaum in the Senate. And I couldn't agree with you more as to just how the tone of politics has changed so dramatically, even in those times when Howard Metzenbaum, the most populous liberal Democrat that there ever was, if you will, was able to get along with Cliff Hanson from Wyoming and, and good Republican, thoughtful Republicans who would actually sit down and be thoughtful together and play tennis together and have relationships together, and how important that was for the working of the Senate. And it just doesn't happen.
The Serv America Act, which I got the Vet Corps to be included in three years ago, was co-sponsored, co-authored by Arnhatch and Ted Kennedy.
Yes.
As far apart on the ideological spectrum as you can be.
Yes.
But they had developed a friendship over the years that allowed them to broker good, sound public policy, which they did in, in many instances. That kind of thing is, is really becoming a relic, unfortunately.
It is. It's just, it's so sad. I also had the privilege of serving Henry Waxman as a senior advisor on the committee, and you are, in my judgment, on the best committee. At one point, it was thought that 60 percent of the bills going through the House went through the Energy and Commerce Committee.
Yeah, very active committee.
It is an extraordinary opportunity. Thank you for your work on telecommuning. I hope our county actually does a little better in that way. We need to do better and appreciate your leadership. When you talk about infrastructure, and my colleagues have correctly pointed out, transportation, your introduction to this part of the world introduces you to PECO. One of the issues that we are dealing with in utilities generally, which I think you can appreciate, is the need to make a huge leap forward in our electric distribution system. I don't know if you saw Tom Friedman's article in the New York Times talking about Chattanooga and the need to make just a giant leap forward. Many of us are calling it Utility 2.0. The governor has embraced that. Montgomery County may be the first pilot in the nation with respect to that. And I'd be happy at some point to meet with you and your staff to talk about that and the support you could give with respect to it. Because you talk about the nature of infrastructure improvements that would make such a material difference in our day-to-day lives. This is one of them.
No question. I'd love to do that. I appreciate it.
Cancel their entrance.
Well, thank you for, for being here.
Sure.
Congratulations, and, and thank you especially for the leadership on the, the Grassroots Democracy Act.
My pleasure.
I think your comments were really insightful about how campaign financing, the changes in it have changed Congress. And people aren't spending time together. They're fundraising, they're raising money increasingly in large contributions from interest groups, and this would give people incentives to seek small individual contributions, to not take pack nutty, and to have access to public funds if a huge amount of money is being spent in any way. So that's all really important, especially since the Grand Court has decimated campaign finance law with the Citizens United decision. So someone used to be Executive Director of Common Cause in Maryland, it's really close to my heart, and, and-
The Common Clause is one of our supporters on this bill. They've done some terrific work in this area.
They have. And, and thank you for, you know, the leadership on it. On the issue of sequestration, about a year and a half ago, Moody's downgraded, or at least, they, they put us on a negative watch. They put Montgomery County on a negative watch because of what was going on in Congress and a few other states as well that receive a fair amount of federal funding. And so when Congress sneezes, we get a cold. And so what is your expectation about what will happen with sequestration?
Well, my expectation is that the Republican majority in the House views, they made a political decision not to try to extract cuts in the budget and, for example, go, go to what I call the earned benefit programs. Others call those entitlement programs. I call them earned benefit programs. They made the, the judgment that politically it was not smart for them to link the, the debt ceiling discussion to the, to the sequestration discussion. So they, they pushed off the debt ceiling. But they're now going to use sequestration as kind of a leverage to go try to get substantial cuts. And of course, the fiscal cliff discussion that we had at the end of the year basically left the entitlement programs untouched. But it didn't mean that the specter of that wasn't coming back, and I think it will come back in the context of, of sequestration. So you're going to get, you're going to get a debate that's really pitting, unfortunately, will be pitting, you know, Head Start against Medicare, for example, the young against our seniors. But they are determined to force that issue. And I think what, what the President, what Democrats are going to try to do is insist on a values-based discussion around that. And, you know, I don't think it means that, that either the administration or Democrats are going to close their ears to, to all proposals on how you can find savings. That wouldn't help what you're talking about if we did. But I think we're going to try and insist on that being a conversation that's, that's fact-based rather than opinion-based. A lot of what we struggle with is the, the extent to which so many members of Congress take positions that don't appear to be connected to the facts and the evidence. And it makes it very difficult sometimes to have a discussion. If, if, you know, you know, the, the saying is, you know, you're entitled to your, your own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own set of facts. And we've struggled with that. So it's going to be very contentious, and we will start, I expect, start hearing pretty soon what the opening position is going to be from the, the House Republican majority on this. What's going to be critical in this is, is having the country support the President and the Democrats on this issue of it being a balanced response. In other words, we're not going to solve the sequestration problem exclusively through cuts. There's got to be revenue. Now, some of that will be in the tax expenditure realm, but there's got to be a revenue part to the discussion. And in the fiscal cliff discussion, we, we sort of began to set the precedent for that. And I understand that, that when, when Washington sneezes, you and others get a cold, but particularly counties that are as dependent upon the federal agencies, as I said, either directly or indirectly, it has implications. And as you mentioned, and as I said at the outset, it has implications for your, for your bond rating, which then increase, I mean, you know, you go, you go down just a notch and it increases your costs across the board in what is really an unfair way, when you think about it. And, you know, this is a well-managed jurisdiction. County Executive Leggett is, stands in a tradition of people who make tough decisions and work with the council to make tough, tough decisions. And so I can understand why you look at Congress sometimes sideways when you're struggling to do the right thing here. So that's what I expect will happen as this rolls out. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you for coming. And I appreciate the fact that you reached out really early. You and I had conversations as soon as, it looked like you were inheriting the territory. And I, I really appreciated your outreach on that. I'm, I'm like everybody else, interested in what can be done for transit, and also recognize that the state has to play a larger role than, than the feds are going to pay in our solutions. I was interested in your comments about public finance, and I was hoping you could maybe tap some of our friends in the House of Delegates and the State Senate on the shoulder, suggest that the proposal in front of them to increase the campaign contribution, something not needed if you, if you want to do anything to further destroy democracy, increase the amount of money that the wealthy can give to campaigns, and suggest that maybe this is a little bit out of touch with where people are trying to go to make these processes more democratic.
Well, of course, the, the problem with that, the proposal in, in legislature is a tricky one because, you know, one could argue that if you really close some of these LLC loopholes and other things, which allow what is really just one interest to divide themselves up in a way that they can distribute, that if those were really closed, then an argument that the overall limit should go up has a little more merit to it. But if you can't be assured that one is going to happen, then certainly there's danger in doing, in doing the other. And I'm glad you pointed to that because this, I'm about to go to North Carolina to talk to some folks about their efforts in their state to combat the influence of, of big money and how to source public policy. But this is happening at all levels, and it's happening in ways that's unseen largely, because we don't have many, you know, Chris Van Hollen has been a champion on disclosure and transparency, which is part of the solution to this. The other is pushing back on the Citizens United case, and the public have expressed outrage about that and are pushing for a constitutional amendment, which is very hard to do. Those are two measures designed to constrain sort of the bad actors in the system. Public funding and grassroots, a sort of grassroots public funding hybrid as a way to fund congressional campaigns, for starters, is about empowering the good actors out there, which are ordinary citizens who want their government to respond to them. And, you know, what I always say to people at the end of these talks is, somebody's going to own your government, right? It's either going to be special interests who have a lot of money and are underwriting campaigns, in which case, when it comes time to make public policy, that's the direction the institutions will lean in, or it will be ordinary citizens. And, you know, the kind of proposal we put forward is a way to, to give it back to ordinary citizens.
I think it's, it's important work. I know your comment on fracking. I'm wondering whether your committee could actually use the National Academy of Sciences to actually do a fracking study. They've been called on, you know, to do some work, I think, for the state of Virginia, and I don't know where Maryland's going to go with this. But, you know, you have this resource at Congress's disposal, they're probably the least expensive research papers you'll ever get.
We're going to, we're going to look at that. Now, in the minority, we don't have as much juice in terms of what we can make happen in commissioning these things, but that's certainly a reasonable request. You know, because of the Dick Cheney, Halliburton loophole, we don't have as much oversight and jurisdiction at the federal level over, over hydraulic fracturing as we could and should. And I'm a, I'm a co-sponsor of Diane Deget's bill that would close that loophole and restore the jurisdiction to the EPA to, to really kind of police what's happening there. My perspective on hydraulic fracturing, and look, I understand it's the bridge that gets us from the dirtiest fossil fuels to a renewable future, and that in terms of the impact on climate change, it's less than what we have with sort of, you know, coal-fired electrical sources and so forth. But we could easily, easily get trapped into thinking that this is going to be our energy source for, you know, the foreseeable future and not keep moving towards the renewable energy sources. And my perspective is based on the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Because watershed is, you know, it starts up there in Cooperstown, New York, right? So you've got New York, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia, Delaware, and the District of Columbia. And then you look at the footprint of the Marcellus Shale Deposits, and it's New York, Pennsylvania, Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland. So they're practically, you know, the, the shale deposit and watershed basically occupy the same footprint. And I'm worried about the cumulative impact on the bays, fortunes going forward, of unrestrained hydraulic fracturing that isn't taking a sort of larger regional perspective, which of course is exactly the thing that the federal government can offer you if they have good oversight and it really can't be captured on a state-by-state basis. So this is something that offers a lot of promise for the country. It's, it's fast leading us towards energy independence, according to all of the statistics. But if it's that much of an opportunity, we can afford to do it safely, and there's many different things that you have to look at in that regard.
So the last question is, what if sequestration is the best deal? Or it's the best tool to get a discussion of revenues, revenues on the table? I've read a bunch of stuff where the suggestion is if you open up with a deal, Republicans are something that want to minimize the cuts on defense, which maximizes even more cuts on the domestic side. And just saying, we're not, you know, we're not going to discuss anything unless there's a revenue increase on the revenues can get a, mitigate defense and domestic spending to some extent, that might be better than opening the whole thing up and winding up with less domestic spending.
Well, that's all going to be part of the negotiation analysis that the President and Democrats in Congress, and Republicans for that matter, are going to do as we get, as we get closer to it. There's, you know, there's no question that the idea of sequestration is to gore everyone's ox, and that as you get closer, closer to the, the effects of that, people will, you know, that'll be what brings them to the table in a serious way. Again, we had elements in the last go-round, and that's the only discussion, that didn't view shutting down government, or, you know, closing it off, or shrinking it to drown it in a bathtub, as goring their ox. They didn't care. They didn't care. And, you know, it's like they were holding the, the government and as a result, the country by the ankles off, off, off the edge of the building and saying, you know, we'll let go. And that's what the President was dealing with in those negotiations at the end. I think we have less of that this time. We've gotten through an election, the President was re-elected, you know, by a, by a impressive margin, all things considered. And this, this notion of designing all of your policy, as Mitch McConnell seemed to do, around the, the goal of defeating the President, that's now behind us. And I'm hoping that, you know, in this two-year period, we can get many things done, but certainly in a much shorter period for purposes of certainty. They'll come to the table in a more serious way, and we can get something brokered.
Counselor, I spread that.
Well, Congressman, I want to say very quick, I want to thank you very much. But I wanted to bring up two quick points, and one of them is regarding solar energy. I've heard a lot of discussion about new and innovative ways in which we can continue to put forth wind energy. And it seems as though the federal government, it seems to strike on the newest, hottest thing while forgetting about some of the tried and trues that have been around for a long time. When you look at Germany and other countries that have done a great job with fostering solar energy and really making that work, what we see here throughout the state, but also throughout the region, is that there are very few people that do it, and those people that do it see the great returns. But beyond that, there's really not a lot of federal incentives beyond, I mean, I know the program that exists, but it's still not enough to really motivate your average homeowner to be able to utilize the systems. And so wanted to see if there was any movement on that part. But as part of the greater discussion, when we talk about what truly has the largest impact, we always relate everything to cars. You know, we talk about solar panels, a solar panel equals, you know, two and a half cars' worth emissions for an entire year. So if our real crux in really getting a handle on our environment and on greenhouse gas emissions and really affecting climate change is cars, then our focus should be on mass transit and supporting transportation. And so when you hear from us talking about mass transit, I mean, I've just been very disappointed with the fact that you hear that the colleagues around the table have said that we're really relying upon the state, and there is no longer a conversation about the federal government truly being a partner with us. And so because you're on energy, because you understand the challenges that we face, I hope that there will be a resurgence for us to continue the conversation about what it truly means to have functional mass transit systems in some of our most populous areas to where people drive and need to get those people out of cars, build mass transit systems like the Quarter City Transitway and the Purple Line, Baltimore Red Line. All of those things need to happen. And it shouldn't be a conversation about, well, we can't afford it. It should be about how do we accomplish this so that we can get to that end goal, which is, you know, really having a true effect on climate change.
Well, I appreciate those comments. I mean, you know, fundamentally, let's be candid, it's an embarrassment for a country like the United States to have an infrastructure- like the United States to have an infrastructure situation like we do. And, you know, there's, there's many bases upon which our, our peers around the world look to the United States for leadership. But one of them, I think, is that we're sort of setting the standard on how you invest in and make strong your own society. And, and I think some of the anxieties that used to be expressed based on sort of, you know, the sort of cowboy attitude with which we, we walk the, the international stage and so forth, have been replaced by anxieties when they look at the limited investment we're making in our own infrastructure. And they ask themselves, how can the United States continue to be a strong leader and partner with us on the international stage when its own internal infrastructure is as fragile as it appears to be? And you look at the investments that are made in other places by fiat in places like, you know, China, but by democratic, you know, consensus in places like Germany and Europe, when it comes to infrastructure. And then you look what we're doing, and it is an embarrassment. It's nothing short of it. The President in his inaugural the other day, I thought it was striking. He acknowledged the fiscal challenges we face, and he's clearly committed to resolving them. But he didn't dwell a lot on the deficit. He talked about the important investments that the country has to make. And that goes to the infrastructure, and also goes to recognition that the best way to, to make your economy strong and restore a sound fiscal position is to get things moving and to invest. And as I say, I think he demonstrated that with the, the stimulus program, as much of a hit as that took sort of out in the, in the public, but it made a difference to our country. And those sorts of investments going forward are gonna be critical. In terms of renewable energy sources, you're absolutely right. I mean, they got backyard solar and wind capacity in places like Germany that puts us to shame. They've somehow figured out how to do this. By the way, they also know how to do advanced manufacturing-
Yes.
-in ways that we are still not grasping in this country, and I think we need to have a national policy on, on manufacturing as we, as we move forward. But tax credits are part of the solution, and in the fiscal cliff deal, we did extend a lot of these renewable energy tax credits. But frankly, until you put a price on carbon somehow, somehow, and get that, what is, what is a huge externality in economic terms, folded into the economic model that make people, upon which people base their decisions on how to invest-
Could be a great way to balance the budget.
You're, well, there you go. You're not gonna make the progress that we need to make. So that, certainly in my committee assignment, that'll be a topic that I, that I do want to-
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Congressman.
Thank you.
I particularly appreciate, you know, listening to your global perspective, because it is very relevant. I also want to say that I'm very pleased to see your outreach strategy here, and I know that you have an extraordinary assistance that was trained very well.
I do my intro due. Someone you all know, Alexis Reed. She was where Nancy for a couple of years.
Trained very well in outreach, so I can guarantee you it's gonna be extraordinary.
Alexis will be staffing our Burtonsville office and doing outreach.
That's wonderful. And, and in closing, I would just say that what was described here as some of the tough positions that we made are very much, very true, but we did it in a balanced way. I mean, we're continually looking at how we invest in our social infrastructure, you know, as well as our economic infrastructure. And, and as you do your outreach, you're gonna find that in this particular area, there are a lot of needs.
Yeah.
And so it is, I think, very important for you to take that to the national scene, and when you are making those decisions or educating your colleagues, really truly be able to relay some of the challenges that, you know, you find in your own backyard and some of the potential that exists.
I also want to introduce Bridget Smith, who directs my outreach for the office.
Wonderful.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Did you get some food?